Getting ready to warm up. Let's see if everybody hushes right before the end.
So what's the plan, the next point?
Oh, she's got a job. We've got, um, in Raleigh. Had an internship last summer. And they like her and they offered her to stay part-time.
No, you'll...
She's been working part-time.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Calavita, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Swicki.
Here.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Present.
Ms. Driver.
Here.
Mr. Resnick.
Here.
Dr. Genovasi.
Here.
Mr. Peters. He's not there yet. Dr. Wilson.
Here.
Dr. Lou is not here yet. Uh, Dr. Littleston.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Excellent. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law has, was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and the Times on January 3rd, 2023. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school board's website, www.hvrsd.org. Members, members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us in our record-keeping and it is up on the podium. Please join me in a flag salute. So we need to approve it. So I need a first and second on approving of the following minutes for the work session meeting on March 6th and also the regular meeting.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Alright, yes. Tana?
Good evening, Dr. Treese, President Williams-Galliano, members of the Board, and esteemed colleagues. Tonight is truly one of the highlights of the year for our district and the Board of Education. Each year, the Governor's Educator of the Year Program honors teachers and educational service professionals throughout the state whose contributions to their students are exceptional. Staff members were nominated by their peers, parents, and students, and I think they're all here this evening. A committee from each of the six schools consisting of an administrator, staff members, and a parent representative use the following criteria to select their recipient. Exceptional instructional techniques, superior ability to inspire students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn, respect and admiration of students, parents, and colleagues, and the ability to foster excellence in education as evidenced by ongoing contributions to the improvement of student achievement and the learning environment. At this time, each of our principals will introduce their honorees, and we're going to go backwards this year. We're going to start with Tolgate, with Ms. Lennon.
I always do everything with my kid right behind me, right next to me. So good evening, Dr. Treese, members of the Board. I want to first say congratulations to Michelle, Kim, Corinne, Kristen, Ryan, Kathy, Tim, and Simone. Over my years in the district, I have had the ability to work with all of you in some capacity. So that says how long I've been here, if I can name off all of the Teachers of the Year or the educators and support professionals. So it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Lori Talerick from Tolgate Grammar School as our 2023 Governor's Educator of the Year. Ms. Talerick came to Hopewell Valley in 2014 after graduating from TCNJ. She was a long-term substitute for Chris Morgan, our media specialist back then, and then Deanna Price. Ms. Talerick took a short leave from Hopewell Valley to go to a charter school where she taught and then returned to Hopewell for two years in first grade, two years in third, and then back to two years in first grade. Ms. Talerick is currently enrolled in the Driver University Teacher Leader Program. I first met Ms. Talerick in the summer of 2016 upstairs in the Curriculum Summer Center at a summer PDAC class. She was so eager to learn anything and everything about teaching reading. I remember, right? Upstairs in that room, we were so excited. Ms. Talerick is also a leader who's constantly reflecting on her craft and asking for feedback. Even with 26 first graders last year in her class, I apprehensively approached her and said, "You got a new student." She was like, "Great! What? Barrow!" And we were like, "Just wait a little bit, Lori. I'll give you some time to get a desk." Mrs. Talerick is thoughtful, compassionate, dedicated to doing what is best for her students. As a non-tenured teacher, she invited administrators into her room to help her coach her through reading and math strategies. She's also an instrumental part of and serves on several school-based committees. She's helped planned our Last Splash event, which is our welcome back in August. She's on our Gator Group Planning Committee and also on our Tolgate All Hands, which is our DEI Committee. Ms. Talerick received several nominations from parents, fellow teachers, and paraprofessionals. Some parents shared these anecdotes and about her nominations. Both of our children have had, that one parent, both of our children have had Ms. Talerick, and she has exceeded our expectations both years. Our son Parker, in 2020, had her, and we were amazed at her ability to engage and teach her students both in a virtual and in-class setting. She was always coming up with ways and strategies to suggestions to meet our students' needs and help them thrive despite COVID and the challenging times we were facing. Our son Griffin, oh, he's over there, is currently with Ms. Talerick in first grade. In just a month and a half, we have seen Griffin grow socially and academically. We are so grateful both children had the opportunity to learn from Ms. Talerick. Her energy and enthusiasm for teaching is evident to everyone who speaks with her. She's an incredible asset to our district. From another parent, my daughter had Ms. Talerick in the 2021 school year. Even on Zoom, her positive attitude, zest for life, came through. She did a wonderful job guiding our children through a very challenging year. At school, Ms. Talerick is always there, whether it be during recess, helping with kindergarten camp, as one of our new Tolgators got to meet her. And we had a great privilege in our family to have Mrs. Talerick for a teacher for four years now. You try the math, yep. For all three of our children. With that, we have been able to watch Ms. Talerick grow as a teacher, and she is a true standout. While we've had wonderful experiences with all our children's educators, Ms. Talerick has been the gold standard. As great as Ms. Talerick is with the students, she's equally great with the parents, whether it be concerns about our students' social interactions, speech issues, difficulties with a lesson, or anything else that arises, Ms. Talerick is willing to listen and guide us through that. She is without a doubt a teacher we will cherish forever. And lastly, I promise, what really separates Ms. Talerick from many other teachers is her personality and her nurturing class environment. She always has a smile on her face, even when she's running late and she has to text me with the latest saga. That's my own adage. So the parent continues to say, "She is so kind and gracious, and she has energy that is infectious. I've seen her numerous times go out of her way to prepare activities for students who are absent, return something to a student on the playground after school who left something, or send students off with care and concern. Even my older child, who has never had Ms. Talerick, likes to say hi to her each day. They know her in the classroom and that their contributions are so valuable. I continue to be thankful for Mrs. Talerick and the nurturing, loving, encouraging environment she has. She is truly commuted a wonderful and an integral part of the Tolgate community." So Tolgate is so lucky to have this wonderful teacher. Please join me in congratulating her. Thank you, Ms. Lennon. Next, we'll call up Mr. Wolfing from Stony Brook.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you and good evening. Thank you, Dr. Treese, for having us here tonight, Board of Education, and quite a crowd in the audience here. That's great. Stony Brook, might just, excuse me. Very good. Thank you, man. Stony Brook is proud to announce Ms. Corinne Byer has been selected as our Governor Educators, Educator of the Year for 2022, '23. Corinne? There she is. Mrs. Byer's been a valued staff member in Hopewell Valley since 2005, first as a paraprofessional at Stony Brook, and then she moved on and took her skills to Hopewell Elementary, became a fifth-grade teacher. In 2015, Corinne returned to Stony Brook, this time as a kindergarten teacher. That's right. She moved from fifth grade to kindergarten virtually overnight. And I said, "Good luck. We're all counting on you." But of course, Corinne met this challenge, as she always does, head-on, and hit the ground running in a new assignment, and moreover, she made it look easy. A consummate professional, Corinne is very giving of her time and always willing to lend a hand to support her colleagues, our school, and this district. Corinne is an active member in many committees at the district level, as well as at Stony Brook, serving on the principal's cabinet. In addition, Ms. Byer makes significant contribution to the profession by serving as a host to aspiring educators from our local colleges and universities. As one colleague noted, Corinne has taken every one of us under her wing. She truly treats the Stony Brook community like a family and would do anything for us. Mrs. Byer is one of the most dependable and thoughtful individuals that I know and can always solve a problem with grace and kindness, making everyone feel valued and special. Her dedication to this district, love of her colleagues, and commitment to her students, and passion for this profession are truly unmatched. I am very fortunate to be able to call Corinne not only as a staff member, but also as a friend and someone that can always be counted on regardless of the time of day, the season of the year, Corinne's always there for you. At this time, we'd like to call her up. Congratulations. Well-deserved honor.
It's always fun here. Okay. Next, we're going to call up interim principal, Dr. Scott Patel from Hopewell Elementary School.
Thank you. Once again, congratulations to all the recipients out there. Good evening, Dr. Treese, President Williams-Galliano, members of the Board of Education, and the Hopewell Valley community. I would like to point out, I think the Hopewell community is a little stronger in this room. Just a shout-out in that corner over there. But the Governor's Educator of the Year recipient for Hopewell Elementary School is Michelle Hamilton. Ms. Hamilton began her employment at Hopewell Elementary in 1999 after teaching for several years in Alaska. Ms. Hamilton was raised in Hopewell Borough and returned to raise her family here. She has invested in the community, taking a very active part in assisting students and families in various ways, as highlighted below in her nominations. She's been a third-grade teacher most of her career, minus a pandemic switch to second grade, second grade for a year. While the last few years have been certainly stressful for all educators, Ms. Hamilton had a very unique situation where she demonstrated her expertise as an educator, but more importantly, her care and concern for her students, the school community, and the community at large. While Ms. Hamilton received several nominations, including one from a student who was diagnosed with a cancer in the middle of his third-grade school year, he wrote, "Ms. Hamilton is the best teacher to have. She makes me feel happy. She made me feel like I was a part of the classroom even when I was not there, sending me pictures when I was in the hospital. When I was in the hospital and I could not have any visitors, she, she still came to see me from the hospital room window. We got to wave to one another as she held signs on the sidewalk below, and I'm proud that I've been Ms. Hamilton's student, and I'm so glad she was my teacher." Ms. Hamilton also made sure the family knew that the support of our entire school, she worked with her fellow teachers to order "In this school, no one fights cancer alone" shirts, collected items to make Easter baskets for this student and his sister, asked for our parents to buy shirts, and so each child in the class had one, and led a drive-by parade past the student's house. The parade included teachers and children from throughout the school, Superintendent Dr. Treese, Freddie the Frog, and many others. The class gathered on his front lawn with posters to express their love and support. The playtime the children had that afternoon in his yard was truly priceless. So when he was able to return to school for a short period of time between radiation and chemotherapy, of course, Ms. Hamilton organized the clapping to welcome him back to school. Ms. Hamilton has clearly been an absolute treasure to our family, school, and the community, and HES is truly blessed to have her as a teacher. So I know, as I see Ms. Lackey there in the corner over there, as well as the whole Hopewell Elementary School staff and the community, congratulations, Michelle.
We have more tissues if anybody needs them. And last but not least, from our elementary schools, a Mr. Turnbull from Bear Tavern.
Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, Dr. Treese. And good evening, families and recipients of this year's Governor's Educator of the Year. And it's an amazing thing to even sit out and listen to the other speeches and to see the amazing things happening throughout our district. It brings such a sense of pride. So congratulations to everyone who's being recognized tonight. But I'm very excited to introduce this year's Bear Tavern Governor's Educator of the Year, Mrs. Kim Niefer. This educator's been teaching at Bear Tavern for over 20 years and has proven that she can teach literally anything, any grade, any type of class, and any student. She's an absolute master of classroom climate, and while most of the education world is sprinting to prioritize social and emotional skills coming out of the pandemic, she's staying the course because she made it cool to be a responsive educator more than 20 years ago. Before we got here today, she was working with my staff and leading a personal, professional development session at our faculty meeting. She is the real thing every single day, all day long. And Mrs. Niefer creates such a safe and joyful, inclusive learning environment for her students and their families, it's truly impossible to not succeed in her class. She puts forth immeasurable time and effort to get to know each and every student on a level that helps her to form deep connections, enhance motivation, and create a sense of community among her students and their families. The staff, and mostly the principal, go to her for advice, tips, and input because she is calm in any situation, she is supportive of everybody, collaborative, and nonjudgmental. The amount of planning and preparation that she puts into everything that she does is astounding. And this year's recipient is universally respected inside of Bear Tavern and throughout our community. One parent commented that it was remarkable how well Mrs. Niefer got to know each one of her students and their individual characteristics, and then used that information to connect with them and motivate them to help them succeed. And a staff member said that Kim is a true leader at Bear Tavern. She has taught everything from fourth and fifth grade to kindergarten and first grade, basic skills, and even special education. She taught remotely during the pandemic with incredible success and can truly do anything. She's firm and consistent, but at the same time, calm and loving, all at the exact same time, and she establishes lasting, solid relationships with everyone around her. Kim Niefer is the 2022 Bear Tavern Governor's Educator of the Year, and it's a truly deserved honor. We're extremely proud and grateful to recognize Kim.
I did. Thank you so much. Thank you. Alright, next we have Ms. Jean Freddie from Timberlane Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Good evening, Dr. Treese, Ms. Galliano-Williams, members of the Board, Hopewell Valley community. As we move from the craziness of the pandemic into quote-unquote "normalcy," the strong connection with students became more critical than ever for instruction, for engagement, and for supporting our students on a daily basis. For Ms. Trinero, connection to our students had always been on the forefront of our instruction before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and now. Kristen Trinero is a Timberlane and Central High School graduate. After graduating in 2008, she went on to Radford University and then Virginia for graduate school. But Kristen's desire to be a teacher started long before that, when she was here in third grade, when she wanted to be just like her teacher, Ms. Benke, who is now Stony Brook teacher, Ms. Susan Hamel. While at Timberlane, Kristen has taught several grade levels in different departments and faces every new situation with creativity, dedication, and student-centered instruction. She is a quiet yet positive force in our school, always putting students first. She deserves recognition not only for her instruction in the classroom, but as, but as she is dedicated to so many other aspects of Timberlane. From her role to yearbook co-advisor, the videographer and editor of the student recognition videos, to the student council co-advisor, we're just painting our staff room over the summer. She has dedicated hours to ensuring that Timberlane is a warm, inviting environment for all who enter. To capture a few comments from her nominations, here are what her students say about her. "Ms. Trinero is always willing to help me, and I can go to her for anything. She is so supportive, she has helped me more than any teacher ever has." "Ms. Trinero is an amazing teacher. She makes our classroom feel safe, and I love learning in her room. She understands kids. She helps kids feel comfortable in her classroom, which helps students look forward to class with making them want to learn. Kristen's dedication is second to none, but I don't think I can say it any better than the quintessential middle school language from student nomination. Ms. Trinero is a girl boss. She slays so much, she is a queen and the best teacher I ever had." Kristen and I started our journeys at Timberlane together, and I couldn't be more proud to introduce her as the 2002 Educator of the Year, Kristen.
And now from Central High School, Ms. Riley.
Good evening, Dr. Treese, President Galliano-Williams, members of the Board of Education, and members of the Hopewell Valley community. I would like to congratulate all of the Educators of the Year and the Educational Support Professionals of the Year. I've had the opportunity to work with many of you during my time here in Hopewell Valley, and my children have been fortunate enough to work with many of you during their time in the district. Special thanks to Ms. Simone for getting Kate through Peach. Thank you. You are truly all an amazing group, but I would like to take a moment to tell you a little bit about the HVCHS Educator of the Year, Mr. Ryan Tobin. You may be asking yourself, "Where is this Ryan Tobin person?" Well, Mr. Ryan Tobin is such an exceptional educator that when he was given the choice between coming here and hearing all sorts of amazing things about himself, or taking a long bus ride to Hillsborough with a bunch of boys volleyball players, he chose to go with the boys volleyball players because he is the JV coach and he did not want to let his team down. That tells you a little bit about the type of person Mr. Tobin is. Ryan Tobin has been a special education teacher at HVCHS since 2014. Over the past eight years, Mr. Tobin has impacted the lives of hundreds of students and expanded their educational horizons in a meaningful, purposeful way. As one of his colleagues stated, "The lengths to which Ryan goes to reach these kids, to find something compelling in their lives with which to make a connection, and seek a touchstone to bridge their lives to the curriculum, is without measure." He has and uses every tool in the teacher's toolbox. He meets every student where they are with respect, dignity, humor, and support. Mr. Tobin's ability to connect with each and every student extends far beyond the classroom. In his role as the volleyball coach, the class advisor, the extended school-year instructor, the key club advisor, and a mentor, he makes connection a priority. As another colleague shared, Ryan has a natural and effortless way with his students. He treats them with respect, he speaks in their language, and makes connections irrespective of background, ability, or age. His presence and persona create a strong and genuine rapport that in turn establishes a safe and encouraging learning environment for all children. Working with Ryan Tobin has helped me to become a better educator, a better principal, and a better person, and I am so proud to introduce him, even though he's not here, as our Educator of the Year.
So this evening, we are also honoring three support staff professionals from Hopewell Valley for their hard work and dedication to the district. Eligible candidates included paraprofessionals, secretaries, custodians, maintenance workers, bus drivers, van attendants, campus safety officers, and the technology department. A committee consisting of myself, the Director of Facilities, Tom Quinn, Director of Pupil Services, Paulette DiNardo, Director of Transportation, Heather Van Mader, and other support professionals reviewed nominations and selected individuals based on the following criteria: dedication to their job, inspiring, and making a difference in the lives of staff, parents, and students. I know he was very excited when he was up here earlier, so let's bring back Mr. Wolfing to the podium so he can introduce his Support Professional of the Year.
Alright. This evening, I have the privilege of introducing to you the, one of the Hopewell Valley Support Professional of the Year, Ms. Kathy Matthews. I haven't even said anything about her yet. Ms. Matthews joined the district and Stony Brook in 20, excuse me, in 2003 as a paraprofessional. The following year, she joined the main office team as School Secretary. And Kathy has been a mainstay at Stony Brook and a major contributor to the success of our school community ever, every day since that time. Kathy is committed to the success and well-being of our school and is the one who makes sure that the special things happen that truly make our school more than just a place to work or to be educated in. A quote from one of the nominations was, "Kathy welcomed me to Stony Brook with open arms and a staff t-shirt, so that I had some school swag to wear on dress-down days. That may seem like a small detail, but it's not. The fact that she cared from the start, that I felt like I was part of the Stony Brook family, meant so much to me, and she has continued to make me feel right at home ever since." And it's true, Kathy goes well beyond the scope of what her job re- And it's true, Kathy goes well beyond the scope of what her job responsibilities are, and it goes right into the heart of what our school is all about. From being part of our spirit committee that recognizes holidays and meaningful events in the lives of staff, to making sure that all those milestone moments make it into the 5th grade video for the end of the year. Kathy has impeccable taste in music. Her sports selection, her support themes, not so much. Still and all, I'd please join me in congratulating Mrs. Kathy Matthews as our Support Professional of the Year. And I need to finish with, thanks, pal. You're the greatest.
You're the greatest. Thank you.
Congratulations. We're working on it.
Thank you, everyone.
Let's bring Dr. Patel back up from Hopewell Elementary.
I'm with the first team. All right, once again, good evening, Dr. Treese, President William Galliano, members of the Board of Education, as well as the Hopewell Valley community. Tonight, I have the pleasure of informing you that Ms. Simone Rodriguez has been recognized as a Support Staff Professional of the Year. Ms. Rodriguez has been a Hopewell Valley Regional School District Paraprofessional since 2008. She has supported various general and special education classes, most recently in our preschool programs. Ms. Rodriguez is knowledgeable about students and families and is constantly looking to build a rapport with them. One of her colleagues noted in her recommendation the following. "Ms. Rodriguez was someone I trusted to help out in a gentle and helpful manner. She cares deeply about the kids in her classroom and wants what is best for them." In addition to being an accommodating paraprofessional, Simone has a natural teacher side to her, too. She always is on the go and never wastes any time. If she's not sitting with the kids, supporting their work, or leading a center, helping with student behavior, or encouraging the children, she is always one or two steps ahead of me prepping materials, organizing student work, or going through student folders. These are just some of the many wonderful attributes that Ms. Rodriguez has brought certainly to the classrooms. And in my short period of time working with her at Hopewell Elementary School, I've quickly realized how important she is to the Hopewell Elementary School community. So congratulations once again, Simone, and thank you for all you do for our HHS.
And I'd like to bring in Mr. Tom Quinn, our Director of Facilities.
Hello, welcome, everyone. I have a quick public service announcement. There's a gray Ford outside with a CarMax logo on it, license plate number N73FBA. Your headlights are on. So that belongs to anybody. But the real reason I'm here tonight is to celebrate Tim Wolverton as being chosen as a Support Staff Member of the Year. Tim has been with us probably low over three years, so not a whole lot of time, but he has made a certain impact on everyone in the district. Tim started out in the grounds department. We quickly moved him up to what's called a PM position, which is preventative maintenance. So he's on the roof, he's doing filter changes constantly, thousands of them a year. He works on all the machinery for the belts to make sure that we don't have breakdowns. The idea is that the better we do preventative maintenance on, the less breakdowns we actually end up with. Couple of years ago, we were in a bit of a bind, and the band needed someone to drive the box truck. And I reached out to all my guys, and Tim immediately responded back. And not only said that he would take a couple of the days, but said, "Don't worry about it, I've got the entire thing." And he has been helping the band parents and the color guard and everything else in that department now for the last several years, transporting them around. It's something he gets a lot of joy out of, and if you are a band parent, you know that. You can see it in the way he interacts with people, that there's a lot of pleasure that comes out of that for him. So I couldn't be more proud than to celebrate Tim Wolverton.
Congratulations again to all of our honorees this evening. Thank you for being here and for all that you do for our students. We do want to take a picture outside, so if everyone could just move out to the hallway so we can get that picture, thank you so much.
So we'll take that quick break. I know some of the kiddos would like... Some of the kiddos would like to get out of here. And then we're going to take that break to take the picture, and then we'll resume the board meeting. We'll start with your presentation.
Are you doing the in-person one?
And time you get reelected.
So like, I was going through... Governor's four, like, three times.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you gotta start over.
On one?
Yeah.
Are we all back? You know it's me. Including my eyes, don't you remember? And I also wanted to eat my cookie without thinking anything about it. The air is? Oh, yeah. I thought you were saying it was so cold. I was like, no, it's... It is not. And Lydia.
And Lydia's.
So it's off.
I'm gonna see Lydia and Alex.
Okay. Thank you all for that. We're going to go ahead and move on to our student representative. Thank you, Angela.
Good evening, everyone. I hope that everyone has been well and had a great spring break. To recap the events of the Spring Spirit Week, the freshman class won the hallway decorating competition promoting their charity, Calms Kids. The classes 2026, 2024, and 2023 are all in the process of selling and advertising their things at the CHS cafeteria. The junior prom will be held on May 6th at CHS, and ticket sales are due by this Wednesday. The senior prom will be on June 2nd, and tickets are being sold from this Wednesday till May 5th. At the end of March, the Youth Environmental Society went to Washington, DC. They met with seven different representatives, including Bonnie Watson Coleman and others, to ask them to co-sponsor two resolutions, one on climate education and the other on mental health advocacy in a changing climate. The Yes Club also prepared a majorly successful Green Week starting last Monday. On Monday, students met with Naimobi Morris, a youth climate activist from Uganda. On Tuesday, the Yes Club presented their DC trip to other students. The next day, students learned about the mental health impacts of climate change with Ms. Lee. And on Thursday, the Yes Club had students hold a Climate Solutions Fair where each member made posters on different climate solutions. We are also in the process of preparing for the Student Council Officers for 2024, as well as the class officers for rising 10th through 12th graders. Applications for these positions will be due on May 5th. Thank you.
Thank you so much, as always. You're more than welcome to stay, but we totally understand. Oh, wait, wait. Before... I'm sorry. Were there any questions from anyone on the board? Okay, great. Well, thank you. She had one foot out the door. Which we completely understand. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Okay, moving on. I just want to take a quick moment to acknowledge each and every one of our staff and our teachers who were recognized. It is always amazing to hear what everyone is doing within their schools and within their classrooms and with their families and students. We appreciate immensely, but most of all, it just leaves me with such a sense of pride that we have the amazing skills of all of these talented individuals. I also want to take a quick moment to note that later in the agenda we'll be going over budget and things like that. And I truly, truly, truly want to acknowledge the administrative body, as well as the teachers of the entire district, who've really looked to challenge themselves, to look at things newly, to figure out how we can approach each of our challenges in the budget with a fresh look. So I just want to acknowledge Bob has done an always... amazing effort, but rallying each of the stakeholders has been critical. And I think everyone feels very well heard, so thank you. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Treese, if she has anything.
Well, I have my report, but I was going to wait to do this during EdCom. Do you want me to do that now? Yeah, can you see that? Okay. Now, these positions are also posted in... So this is going to be touching on a couple of committees that we'll be presenting tonight. One is the Personnel Committee. We'll be approving these job titles for these two roles. And we also presented this to the Education Program Committee. Just a little history about teacher leaders. We have, and we do have, on our books, teacher leaders. We had them in the elementary schools, in the middle schools, prior to having STEM facilitators. And their roles were slightly different than they are than the ones we're proposing now. And understand that this discussion is coming forth now to the larger community that I presented to the... that we presented, Dr. Plitz and I, who couldn't be here tonight, to the EdCom Committee out of a need with our teachers of needing more support, and also having a very, very tight budget. So we haven't eliminated the STEM facilitator positions, but they are going to be on pause for a year, and I'm going to walk you through why this was proposed to the Board. Thank you. So the first thing that brought this conversation back, and we've had this discussion in the past. We've been monitoring this for the past four years. Prior to me coming to the role as superintendent, as assistant soup, we were seeing gaps in our English Language Arts curriculum and in the math curriculum, and certainly in the performance of our students. We were seeing our scores drop in both these areas for two very different reasons. One is our teachers working with two different curriculums, starting with one math workshop, which was new to them, and then having to adopt a new one after that one expired, right in the middle of COVID. And then we had the changes that we've seen in language arts, right? A lot of you have been reading in the papers about the science of reading and balanced literacy and reading/writing workshop, and that a number of students are losing ground in our reading/writing performance based on schools leaning more heavily on writing workshop and less on the mechanics and the science of how students learn to read. So teachers were saying that they needed the support. We were seeing our numbers, our scores drop. And a pandemic made it worse for everyone. That kind of deepened the issues that we had. So we saw the gaps in the learning. And again, these were exponential after COVID. And we also saw the rise in our... And, um, again, these were exponential after COVID. And we also saw the rise in our, in our special ed numbers. As we went from like a 17% classification rate, which was already very high. Most people should be like at a seven or eight. We were already at 17 and now we're at 22%. And I believe, and I, and Mr. Nardo, if she were here tonight, would also say that a lot of that is due to gaps in learning. It's not really that these students would have been classified had we been supporting them at the, um, the first tier level, the classroom level. So that was one of the problems that we had identified and have been monitoring over the course of the years. Additionally, we saw gaps in our, in our curriculum that needed to be corrected. A lot of that work has already occurred where we've put these programs and this training back in place for our teachers, but they feel like they need that support. We've had a lot of teachers retire. We have new teachers that are coming in that we're still training and trying to support at the classroom level. And the teachers came to us multiple times this year saying, these 12 K-12 positions that are so enormous where someone's in charge of all the way up to the 12th grade, we need the support at the elementary level. And a lot of times when you hire for these positions, you end up hiring somebody that's a secondary person because you need that content understanding at the secondary level and then you work backwards. So they were saying that we need support at the elementary level specifically in our mathematics, science, and ELA curriculum, ELA, because elementary teachers are required to teach all of the subjects. And they were not feeling they had the support that they needed in those content areas. But we have a budget crisis. So though I wanted to add these teacher leader positions back, I can't afford to pay for that and the STEM facilitators at least this year. So this is what the objective was. If you want to go to the next slide. To provide targeted support to our faculty administrative team in the areas of literacy, science, math, and technology. So that was our objective. You can go to the next slide. So what Dr. Plitzis and I proposed to the board was that we take the monies that we were using for this, for the STEM facilitators, and there was some flux happening with them, the STEM facilitators anyway, with, with folks requesting transfers and then some people leaving, that we had an opportunity to kind of do this instead of doing a job search and then really having, you know, reinforcing a position that wasn't giving us what we need right now. Though the STEM facilitators do an amazing job, and I'm going to say that we still need them, but we're going to put them on pause right now to pay for these positions for now. The, the literacy teacher leaders, um, would, there would be, we're proposing two. One for grades pre-K to 2, that grade band where critical, it's critical that reading intervention happens before third grade and make sure that we're really, really dealing with the mechanics or, or dealing with the science of reading and teaching phonology, phonemic awareness, word study, really making sure that our readers are getting a strong foundation pre-K to 2. And then literacy, uh, literacy teacher leader, grade band three to five. These folks would answer, these are not supervisor position, these are teacher coaches. They will, um, work with the supervisor of ELA, which is a K-12 position, and the social studies K-12 supervisor to support literacy development in those areas. Then the second two would be math, science, technology teacher leaders, pre-K to 2 again, and then also one at 3, 5. The reason why we're choosing to do the, the grade bands in this way is to make sure that we have continuity in the way the curriculum is being monitored, rolled out in all of the elementary schools, because those people will be looking at it across four schools instead of just one. And not working in a silo. They'd be able to support each other in that. The job responsibilities. Support PLCs, the professional learning communities at each grade level to make sure that we're implementing the, uh, the curriculum consistently and, and the same across the schools. Coordinate, develop, and facilitate professional development opportunities for instructional best practices. Provide instructional coaching to their colleagues. Again, they're not supervisors, so they're not coming in with a punitive lens. They're coming in and let me support you in your practice. Let me co-teach with you if you're struggling. Let me show you how to group. Let me show you how to use the assessments, the benchmarks, get ahold of the supplies if you need them. They will evaluate and revise curriculum materials as well during the course of the year if needed. And they'll support the data warehousing and the communication of that data to the teachers and package it so that they can take that and then now run with it in their classroom. Which is, you know, we have lots of data, but having someone to break it down to you and say, here, these are your kiddos. Let me show you how to group them. And these are the skills they're missing. And not just these are the skills, but here is a tool that you can use in that classroom to teach that student. So the, the teachers are very excited about getting the support. And that this, this role would not be something that the STEM facilitator would do because that's, their role is quite different. The experience required for this is four years teaching experience. Experience teaching multiple grade levels preferred. It wasn't necessary. Evidence of previous experience coaching, leading PD, participation in school-based, uh, district-wide committee work. And demonstration of expertise of instructional pedagogy and data interpretation and integration in the content area they're implying, whether that's math and science or the literacy role. So we presented this to the EdCom Committee, um, and that'll be shared here momentarily with, um, with the Committee Chair. But they did have these concerns. One is they do not want to lose the STEM facilitator position, even though they know right now funding it and funding this are going to be difficult. I expressed to them my concern that, you know, right now, you know, we are, are hemorrhaging and we have a triage that we need to do to get our kids back on track. That I want our kids to have this, the, the math and literacy skills to not just get excited about these STEM positions that are available in the world, that we need competent people to take a hold of. But they need to have the base and the foundation to be able to do the job once they get it, right? So they agreed that this could be a pilot for these positions, understanding that they don't think four of these, two and two is going to be enough. They would like us to expand it in the future in addition to bringing back the STEM facilitators. So this brings a challenge to my team here to come up with how we're going to fund that next year. And we're gonna, we're definitely have that on our plate to do and are committed to doing just that. They want to see, um, that, and that's if it improves. We're not just going to expand this if we're not seeing it in our, in our, in improving in our scores. Bring back STEM facilitators, um, in a, in a role where they're, they're, um, consistent across the district. Our STEM facilitators do a phenomenal job. All students don't experience our STEM facilitators' great work because they are invited in by the teacher. When we bring them back, we would like something, they're, they've asked us to have something consistent where all kids are experiencing that sort of like of an exploratory experience. And so really, um, having that is something all kids rotate through, just like they do world language, wellness, the other exploratories they have in their classes, art and music. Couldn't think of the other ones. Continue to find support for teachers at the, at the classroom level beyond that. If they're saying they need this help, make sure we're providing that PD. And then also ensuring that there's equity in the instruction that's going on in all four elementary schools. Whether it's their STEM facilitators or what our, our coaches and our supervisors are overseeing. So moving forward, this is the plan. We are adopting a new master schedule at the middle school in the 24, 25 school year. In that, uh, our priorities are that we have a full block for language arts. We have a full block for math. That's support workshop and students being, getting the support they need at the classroom level. We're also supporting our gifted and talented students and the twice exceptional students in our, in the classroom. And that that space is available during the classroom day and that tier one support is happening for all of our students in, in English Language Arts and Math. So that pull out our push-in that they need in the school day. Schedule will also contain those, those exploratory courses, those elective courses that we value. And they're really exploratory because all the kids get them. They're not electing to take them. And music and art and world language and the STEM lab and the STEM, you know, bringing that STEM back. The labs will still be there. They still are allowed to be used by teachers. They always have been. But to have that STEM facilitator giving that service all the time in that lab as part of an exploratory experience. Ensuring the contin- continuity of those experiences in all four schools. So there's a curriculum that all the schools are experiencing. And then also we're looking to departmentalize. It happens at, at some of our elementary schools and not all, in grades four and five in, in math, language, arts, social studies, and science. Instead of teachers having to be responsible for, for all four of those subject areas, as, as the content is getting more difficult, they would be responsible for two. And then we can really hone in and focus in on the instruction and their support in their professional development. So that is the plan that's going to happen in the next year. That's going to take a lot of planning, um, curriculum writing. I know this is a change, um, but this is something that I strongly believe is going to help us. One, stop the bleeding that's happening with our, our scores. Get us back on track with our, with the students that have lost learning or just didn't acquire it because of the pandemic. But we were seeing this problem before the pandemic. And I think now with our limited resources, this is what's best for us right now, knowing that, listen, I, I know what this community values. I know what, what you all want from us and I, I absolutely want the same things. I wish I could fund all of this right now, but I can't. So this is what I'm recommending would be the best thing for right now. And, um, moving forward, um, that'd be the plan to fix it. One more thing I want to say, um, just quickly before I go. You know, you want to put the next one up. I know that, um, that, that, uh, change can be tough. And change without growth is, is, is not useful, right? But if we don't have change, we certainly are not going to have growth. And right now I feel like this is what we need right now to, you know, I was talking to, um, to somebody about this analogy earlier. We, you know, we're baking a beautiful cake and we have all the icing and the cherries on top with the phenomenal work our STEM facilitators do. Their job was not designed to do all the things I just said. So it's not fair to say, well, they weren't working because they were working and doing what we asked them to do. And I, I know that's still valuable, but right now this is what it is that we're struggling with. And I just need to get us back on track as a district and I, and our teachers are asking us to help them get back on track. So thank you for that. Um, just, this is not on that topic. But I wanted to share my next two Superintendent Coffee and Chats. I will be sending this out to the whole community in an email, but you're seeing it first. We're going to do one on mental health and, um, school safety. I've gotten emails. We've had some, um, some mass shootings of late. We've had some smaller scale shootings of late. And, and issues going on in our community around, um, violence, gun violence in particular. I am going to have a coffee and, uh, a chat on May 18th. While I will talk some about the, um, the way we handle security. And we did have a large presentation about that with our police in October. I'm going to table any real in-depth conversations about arming guards and all of that. Because I have Ms. Smith, who's in charge of our, our, um, safety and security along with myself. And, uh, Mr. Calavita are going to, they're working right now to get numbers for you all. On what does it cost to do that as a district and have those in-house? To have SROs at the police or have the umbrella or a combination of both or hiring an outside security firm? I want you all as a community to have all the numbers, all the risk and, and liability to the district. And hear from the police chief, chief on his thoughts on it before we make a decision because there's some big numbers involved in addition to all the, the, the pieces that we have to do to make sure that our, um, if we're going down that road as a, route as a community, that we're prepared to do that. Right now, our, most of our SROs are able to, um, but it's just a matter of what this community wants us to do. But I will talk about mental health, which is a big piece to keep the need for this to happen in the first place on that night as well. And then on June 7th, getting ready for, for, uh, a long summer vacation with, uh, your children. We're going to do a drug awareness and drug discussion and safety on June 7th. The police chief or our liaison will come and he's going to actually bring some samples of things that might be hiding in plain sight in somebody's house or around. So you can kind of see what's out there in the streets and what kids might be seeing or, or, you know, have access to. And we'll talk to you and he'll talk to you about some ways that we can protect our kids over the summer. And we'll share what we're doing as a district to try to prevent, um, drug use and abuse in our schools. Right? So that's the end of my presentation. That's a lot.
Yeah, if I did have a question, thank, thank you. Um, thank you, Dr. Therese for giving the overview. I just want to make sure I understood. So in terms of the new positions, are those intended to be district-wide, full-time responsibilities for those?
Yes.
Okay. So that, so just to make clear, that's different from, like you said, the teacher leader positions we had
Yes.
several years ago where they still had classes, but then they did that as
Yes.
part of their time. Okay.
Yes.
And, and just, just so I, you know, so I can understand and others too. What was it about, uh, in, in this circumstance, which drove you to the, the full-time type of, of position versus what we had before?
So the elementaries before were full-time positions. Remember when we had the teacher leaders, the elementary school was full-time. And the, um, the high school and the middle school were not. And they got a stipend. We do want to bring the high school and the middle school ones back at some point, but they will be stipends. They'll be teaching and they'll, they won't have a duty. And I think they, they taught a little less. They didn't have a duty. And then they got a stipend to pay for their teacher leader support.
Okay. No, thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
I also have a quick question. You mentioned about the, the balanced reading and the science of reading. So is our district moving to like away from balanced reading with the new research? And would that be part of these new positions' job to help support the teacher?
Yes. So the, the research says, and we were already, we had already picked up on it before the, the newspaper articles blew up. We have a very, um, very talented reading specialist, Michelle Maglione, who's our Special Education Reading Specialist, who identified this issue before the pandemic. We saw our numbers growing and, um, EdCom, whoever's on EdCom at the time remembers that we discussed it. And she identified this was the issue. We went down the road of investing in Hagerty, which is, is the program that we use for the phonemic awareness and developing and manipulating sound and all of that within word study through K through two. We trained all of our teachers. They started implementing it. Then the pandemic happened. And then everything blew up again. So we already own Hagerty. Our teachers have been trained. Now it's just making sure we do a consistency, consistently, making sure we have a full block of time that's dedicated to this happening K to two. And I think that Vicky and, and Amy and the group are already looking at adding it to three as well. So yes, they would be in charge of doing that. Reading workshop will not go away. But we're focused on that reading workshop in the upper grades and then just letting them dabble in it in the primary grades.
Okay. Thank you. I, I appreciate the district really following the science. It's important.
Yes.
Congratulations on that. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Therese. Okay. Um, so we're going to go ahead and move to the next agenda, a public hearing on this special opportunity for the budget.
Okay. It seems like the budget's been going on now for a long time. And it has. But we are approving tonight the final adoption. What we did in March was the tentative adoption to be submitted to the county. It came back from the county with no, uh, comments or adjustments. So that was good. So now we present it to you tonight for the final approval and then implementation, uh, in the, in the coming weeks. So just where we started, we started with, um, you know, the things that we value in our budget. It goes from everything from working through our mission statement to maintaining the, the New Jersey learning standards. And again, forging a path that leads us towards the future, which is why we did a lot of the things that we're doing this year to get us, uh, established for next year. Some of the drivers in this year's budget that we dealt with, um, rising health insurance costs, transportation, the cost of renewals, drivers and fuel. In general, just the cost for energy. The unanticipated facility and maintenance costs that we have. We have, uh, several buildings that are approaching 100 years. And even now, our youngest building is in excess of 20 years. And we never thought that Stonerick was our new building, but it's not quite so new anymore. Property, uh, special education, we've talked about the added district tuition that we're facing, the increases that we're facing, 10, 20, uh, 11, 12% for some of those services that are necessary for our students. Property and casualty insurance, workers' compensation insurance, all at, uh, record highs this year. The, the market for insurance is, is rising. Workers' compensation is being affected by, believe it or not, judges and, and the laws that New Jersey is passing that is making more and more, uh, things compensable. So we're dealing with those. Again, the, the curriculum instruction issues we just spoke about. Our curriculum is always evolving, changing and adapting, and, and we need to include that into our budget. And staffing, um, you know, the, uh, the majority of our budget is staffing. It's what we do. We educate children and that's a service. And we, um, have had increases, uh, due to inflation in our contracts that we're, that we approve. So where we started, we had a shortfall as we started the budget plan this year of somewhere in the area of $4.2 million. We made an initial pass to try to reduce that. We, uh, used, we estimated an additional $600,000 in state. We used, we estimated additional $600,000 in state aid. We had bank cap from previous years of $268,000, and we used a health benefit waiver of $1.5 million to try to close that gap. It still left us about $1.8 million short. The board challenged us to come up with some solutions that didn't have a huge impact on our educational program. So we got together, Dr. Therese got her administrative team together, and we came up with some solutions that we shared with the board on March 6th. And these are some of the things, these are the things that we presented to the board and how we got to a final number. A lot of these will be through attrition. We did, we're able to realize some instructional staff reductions due to some enrollment issues. Breakage, which means a younger staff or a less expensive staff member, replacing a more expensive staff member on retirements. We started to reduce some software platforms. We had some platform software that did the same or similar to some others. We consolidated where we could. Ms. Donardo came up with some added district tuitions that she was able to pull back. The students either came into district or were no longer coming into the district. They left. And we're going to delay some technology upgrades, mostly in the matter of some servers, some high-end equipment that we're able to push off for a year, and we hope to tackle that next year. Further challenge by the board, what else could we touch if we wanted to make some more reductions to limit the tax burden on the community? These were things that the administration did not recommend. They are not in any kind of order. But some of the things that we brought to the board for their consideration, but we did not recommend. After that meeting, the items that are in color will be put forth to be addressed by our various committees over the course of the next year prior to the development of the 2425 budget for either reinstatement, altering, reductions. But there'll be discussions on those four items as we move forward next year. Doesn't mean that's all we're going to discuss next year. As you heard, Dr. Therese mentioned some things that she's looking to either put back or amend. But these are some of the things that we're going to focus on in the 2324 budget year. Our budget right now is up 5.7%. We focus on the blue line, the operating expenses. That's what it takes to run our day-to-day operation of about 5%. As we mentioned earlier in the presentation, it's driven largely by our benefits, our transportation costs and our staffing. And the sources of our revenues, obviously in New Jersey, we must have a balanced set of expenditures and revenues. We do have a 4.1% increase in the tax levy. The general fund tax levy and the overall budget is up 5.7%. We are a heavily funded district on local, on the local sources. Property taxes are 86% of our budget. Some other revenues that we're able to generate are about 1% of our budget from tuitions, the transportation fees we charge and charges for folks to use our buildings, which are used pretty much six to seven days a week. And we have 5% of money that we have been able to save over the years. We've put that back into the budget. State funding is around 7%. It's up slightly from last year. Last year was probably 6.5%. And federal funding, which is really less than 1% of our budget, it's basically dollar in, dollar out. It's money that goes to some of our more needy populations. Again, more support for our special ed students. But again, these are entitlement grants. We submit applications for these, and we get them for a very specific purpose. It doesn't typically go to fund our general operation. And just a pictorial description of where our money goes. If you start at 12 o'clock and you move around to the 9 o'clock hour, the majority of our budget goes into our direct education and staff benefits. That's where the majority of our instruction goes. Transportation encompasses another big portion. So again, the majority of what we do is going directly into the education of students. So again, this year, the overall increase to the budget, the total at the bottom, 4.1%. It's larger than the 2% that's statutory because we did use bank cap and a health benefit waiver from years past. What does that increase mean? It means a 7 cent increase to Hopewell Borough, a 3 cent increase to Hopewell Township, and a 15 cent increase to Pennington Borough. The average homeowner, the average tax rate will be $1.82 and would be a $296 increase for the average homeowner. The average home in each of the municipalities hovers right in the $500,000 area. Again, $172 in Hopewell Township and $703 in Pennington Borough. That's the end. At this point, we can open it up for questions from the board and then the public and our open public comment portion of it.
Thank you. Bob, questions from the board?
I had two questions, Bob. One was just, I think I saw the number, the use of fund balance this year is about $4.7 million. And I remember a couple of years ago, we were really trying to get that number down to like the $2.5 million range. So one, is that due to inflation that's occurred this year?
No, it's, well, it's basically $1.7 million of that is going directly towards a capital project. So it kind of skews that number. So as we've talked for many years, the best use of surplus are one-time expenditures, and we are using it. We're a little bit higher than that 2.5% on the general operation. But because we're putting 1.7 million towards that chiller boiler project at Hopewell Elementary, it's not as big an impact.
Okay. One of the main reasons I just asked that was from the standpoint of, it's always a challenge every year to generate the fund balance. But this year has been particularly difficult, as we've seen over the last nine months. So, you know, from that standpoint, you know, any great concerns about us being able to actually generate that amount of fund balance?
I think we're, I think we're okay right now. We had a little bit of play when we did our last quarterly report in, what did we do, in March? We're watching it. We do have the reserve account for our health benefits should we run into trouble there. But I think we'll be okay with maintaining the number that we needed to hit for this year. Yeah, it has been a difficult year with expenses trending way, way higher due to the inflationary period that we're in right now.
Okay. The other question I had was related to the fact, you know, now that we've had the budget go to Mercer County Superintendent review, I assume they review the other districts' budget. Is there feedback? Is there coordination among the other districts? Like, are the other districts in the county having the same type of challenges?
Sure, yeah. I mean, a lot of, a lot of our colleagues are using waivers and surplus this year. They've saved bank cap. Other districts have had to cut significant staff, 2025 staff members due to loss of aid. We were actually able to gather additional state aid this year, but other of our colleagues, Robbinsville for one, got flat state aid, which is like negative state aid. So, you know, we feel we're very fortunate this year to have gotten some additional monies to help us combat that. But again, we're hoping that the health benefit blip that we have this year is just that, a blip, and that we'll return to a normal, normal set of spending next year.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board with questions?
Mark, you good? He's driving. Okay.
Not, I was just going to comment on one other thing, like compared to any, you know, I've been on the board a long time. Compared to any other year, like the amount of feedback and preparation that the administration did getting us ready for what was occurring this year was way beyond that. So it's appreciated.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, I think the way we've been discussing the budget has been far more productive because everybody is in on the discussion where, you know, we're able to go back to research things in all of our committees to bring back to the board. So I think it worked well, and we got started early on the process. And we'll do the same thing, you know, this year. I joke, but as soon as we do this, I'll start, I'll start next year.
Start over, yeah. Okay. Everybody good?
Just on budget.
Okay, we're going to now open the floor for public comment specifically around the budget. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter of
On budget, just budget.
Oh, sorry. I just said that. Members of the public are invited to address the board on the budget for a maximum of three minutes during the portion of the meeting, this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. And again, just a reminder, if you could, when you approach the podium, to sign in. Public comment is now open.
Okay, is it on? Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you. My name is Kristen Coop. I live at 5 Northwoods Drive in Pennington, and I'm a member of the Hopewell Township. I'd like to say good evening to Dr. Therese and the members of the board, and especially to our parent representation that is here tonight. I want to especially thank our parents for participating in this important dialogue surrounding elementary curriculum and for engaging in the community process of collaborating on our public education.
I'm sorry, I would ask you to hold that. This is specifically around budget.
And this is specifically relating to the cuts outlined for the budget.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Does it count against my time? Okay, good.
You will not be docked. Thank you for clarifying.
Yes. I just want to say, I think it's a beautiful thing that we've seen so many parents here tonight, both to recognize the amazing teachers that we had in our district earlier and also to just take part in this responsibility that we have as parents and community members. So thank you, Dr. Therese, for hosting a small information session this afternoon with the PTOs, several parent representatives as well, to share some more details about the proposed changes and the plans for the future of STEM. It's critical that the channels of communication are used and invitations for parent involvement are extended to ensure the collective awareness of these budget changes prior to critical decision-making moments. I wish we had had a little bit more time before the present moment to discuss this with the board. Dr. Therese's commitment to a dynamic STEM program is reassuring. However, I'm concerned the path forward of eliminating positions only to bring them back a year later is disruptive. The expectation that two individuals supporting math, technology, and STEM will be able to simultaneously improve math test scores across all schools while also writing a complete curriculum for a new STEM program is perhaps unrealistic. I hope that I am proven wrong, but what will happen to the future of STEM if the math scores do not go up in one year? Will STEM be on the chopping block again? How can we assure, be assured that STEM has a place in the future? And how many variables will change in elementary education while attempting to evaluate the specific impact of these positions on student learning? We have heard that class sizes in elementary will increase. Direct faculty-to-student positions are being decreased. All the while, teacher coaches newly trained in their field will learn to support 36 individual classrooms. How will you ensure that all the teachers use these coaches when not all the teachers use the STEM facilitators? These are high expectations for brand-new positions. Dr. Therese, Mr. Colavita, I so appreciate your hard work and effort on the budget, and I recognize that these are incredibly difficult decisions, and a lot of thought and attention has been put into them. So thank you so much, and thank you for giving us a forum for voicing our opinions. I just feel strongly that elementary education shouldn't bear the brunt. Thank you for the extra five seconds. Thank you. Shall I stay or sit?
You may be seated.
All right, Ryan Kennedy, 104 West Broad Street, the Hopewell Borough. I'm here just on my own behalf, not any organization or governing body or Grove of Trees or Genus of Animals or industry, I'm just myself and my kids here tonight. And I come to show and offer support on this budget to this board and administration as it continues to reflect the priorities of this amazing community. And also, to be honest, I come here with no particular expertise on the things you're talking here tonight other than perhaps knowing that your jobs are really hard and almost always thankless. And as one of the nearly three people that came to the first budget coffee, I know that likely myself and the people on this side of the dice don't necessarily have the answers or the magic bullet to help you guys do what you need to do beyond what I'm going to do right now, which is to thank you. During COVID, and frankly, the whole time of my family's time here at Hopewell Valley with the school district, we've taken the emphasis and resources put towards STEM for granted. It's one of the things that I tout about this district and this community when I'm talking about it. And it's something that I'm just absolutely thankful that we had during those lost COVID years. Our community's investment in collaboration and outdoor spaces, on nature and science, saved us, I think, during those years. And I'm thankful we've had as much of it as we could. And I'm not necessarily here to ask for any specific action. There's no magic trick about budget surplus or things that I'm saying. I know you guys know more about that than anyone, despite the number of meetings I might come to and wish I had an answer. I know I don't. But to just be among the voices here to tell you how appreciative we are of what this district has provided our students when it comes to STEM education, and that your investment in them in that is noticed. It's noticed by my family, it's noticed by my kids. They tell me, they feel the change they are making when they plant something, when they connect with outdoor spaces that STEM education has brought us. And it's not just the direct investment you've made. There is a tremendous multiplier effect on STEM education with outside funding, joint work with great partner organizations that we see in this community that's supported. As you continue to weigh our community's priorities, I'm here to thank you. And thank you that STEM continues to remain a priority for you and for us. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Mora. I'm a director at RISD-Maisiew. I'm a scientist, very passionate about STEM. But I also understand the difficulties. Through my career, I had to let go of three scientists. So I know the difficulties of budget. We encounter them in our industry too. So I just wanted to acknowledge how I see the difficult job you have. But I've also seen the influence that our STEM teacher had at Hopewell Elementary. And recently this year, I worked with her to give a presentation on cell therapy. And it really ignites the kids. Afterwards, a couple of parents reached out to me to say that the kid got home so excited about learning and stuff. So I wanted to share that because sometimes the little, those things that may seem little are the ones that really bring the learning to a new level. The other thing that occurred to me while, when I was hearing about this topic is that, boy, if I were a part of this staff and I take on a position and leave my other position as a direct teacher, and I'm excelling in it, I'm doing so good and getting awards, and yet my position is being eliminated. What message that that sent to those that would apply to now these teacher leader roles that are not directly working with the staff too, right? It's, I understand your dilemma, but I'm thinking like, man, that sounds wrong. And I know in your industry, Like, and I know in your industry, maybe there's no like performance evaluation like there is in mine, so it's easier for me to let go of staff that is not performing as well and keep the one that's excelling. I just wanted to share that through my eyes and the part that I think is very challenging. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Kim Johnson, 48 Orchard Avenue in Hopewell Township. A survey was conducted in February at Timber Lane for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade children that asked very private and personal questions. I'm not quite sure this survey would be legal-
I'm sorry, is this related to budget?
Yes, it is. By the third paragraph.
Oh, okay.
Not quite legal, would not be legal in a place of employment, let alone a school full of children. One question asked to children as young as 11 was, "What is your sexual orientation?" One of the goals of this survey was to find out how comfortable students are with speaking to parents about these topics. Based on the results of this survey, it is now necessary to have teachers attend a workshop about how to have courageous conversations with students. There's a lack of transparency here. Most parents are unaware that this survey occurred in the first place, unaware that this survey occurred in the first place. And if they were told by their children that they were asked these questions, they were not told anything about the objectives or findings of the survey. This is not acceptable. This pits parents against the schools and leaves children in the middle. This makes me wonder what happened that prompted this survey to be necessary in the first place. Is there an issue that we don't know about? Many of these children still believe in Santa Claus, and you are asking them about their sexual attitudes and beliefs. That should be a private conversation between parents and their children. It does not belong in the classroom. It's very concerning that you are reshuffling teachers from the elementary school STEM program and are considering removing middle school sports while you focus on taking over the role of the parent. At a time when we are tightening the budget and children are experiencing significant learning loss, it seems to me that this district is prioritizing DEI over academics. I have a few questions about the teacher workshop that is planned in response to the results of the survey. Can you please share more about what teachers will be learning in the workshop and how students will be impacted? And is there a third party conducting the workshop, either directly or indirectly by providing resources? And if so, what is the name of this organization and what is the cost to the district? We all want what's best, what's in the best interest of our children. If that's the case, why not partner with the parents instead of leaving them in the dark?
Gosh, there is a lot to fill out here. It's like people are really taking their time up here.
Hi, my name is Kate Elliott. I live at 46 North Greenwood Avenue in Hopewell Borough. My kids attend Hopewell Elementary, Timberlane Middle School, and the Central High School. I'm coming tonight wearing mostly my mom hat, but like, it's hard to take off the former employee teacher hat, so I'm gonna kind of like balance both hats on my head. The first thing I want to say is I think a lot of what you're saying is amazing and definitely stuff the district needs. Absolutely, there's been a ton of new curriculum introduced in the last few years, and it is a lot to ask the staff to be implementing that. I think the recognition that the K-12 supervisor positions are fundamentally ineffective, especially often at the elementary level, it's just too large a job with not enough focus. Obviously, it's difficult to stand up here and say, "Yes, do that, and keep doing everything else," right? The money has to come from somewhere. I will just say, my children have been greatly impacted by both the STEM position at the elementary level and the technology position that is also being cut, which I'm not sure is quite talked about, but I think is also happening. The two technology teachers at the two elementary schools. I will say that from a staff position, when you talk about a 25, 22% special education chunk, a quarter of our kids, right? As somebody who taught all of those students at once, they weren't pulled out. I was librarian for anybody who doesn't know, elementary librarian. It's really challenging to support all of those students when they come often unsupported with paraprofessionals, right, didn't have a co-teacher. As a special area teacher, I often relied on the STEM teacher, on Vicky Obst, who was my technology teacher at the time, it's now Chelsea McLean, to support me so I could teach robust lessons to those students by having another person with me. And I know that our elementary school classroom teachers do the same. They are able to teach more robust science lessons and technology lessons when they have another person in the room with them. It's just, it's an issue of like mathematics, like it's too many kids to help. So, I would just urge that you-
Here, time is up. I'm sorry.
Focus on that.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Eileen Gerwitz. I live at 1 Tyburn Lane, Hopewell Township. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I recognize the challenges that you are facing, but I still feel the need to advocate for my child and the other students in his school. My son is a student of Hopewell Elementary School, and as a parent, I'm concerned about the impact that these cuts will have on my son and the other children in the school. And I'm sorry, I used the word cuts, the pause in funding, as we're calling it now. Technology and STEM are essential skills for success in today's economy. In fact, a recent study by the U.S. Department of Labor found that STEM jobs are growing at twice the rate of all other jobs. By cutting these programs, we are putting our students at a disadvantage. They'll be less prepared for jobs of the future and less competitive in the global economy. In addition, these pauses in funding will have a negative impact on the quality of education at our school. Technology and STEM programs are not just about learning facts and figures. They are also about developing critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills, and creativity. These are all essential skills that our students need to succeed in school and in life. Many of the most impactful lessons that we hear about from our kids happen in the STEM classroom and in technology. In fact, for those of you that know my son, you'll be surprised to hear that STEM and technology rank above FISA. And so, that's a very high praise. I would like to add that by cutting these programs or pausing the funding for these programs, it also is going to have a negative impact on the school's morale. Our teachers are passionate about teaching STEM, and the support that they receive from the STEM facilitators and the technology support is so important for them to continue to doing so. Our students are also passionate about learning from these excellent teachers that we have. By pausing these programs, we are sending the message to the faculty that we don't value their work and to the students that we don't value STEM and technology. These specials are one of the things that make Hopewell Elementary so special. I urge you to please reconsider the proposed pauses to the funding of these programs. Our child's lives have been on pause. You know, I have a third grader, his life was on pause from kindergarten through second grade in one way or another. And I just ask you to please don't pause it again for another year. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can you hear me? My name is Laura Swicki. I live at 242 Federal City Road in Pennington, New Jersey. Good evening, Board of Education members. I'm here tonight to voice my deep concern regarding the cuts to the STEM and technology facilitators across our elementary schools. From my understanding, the district plans to embed STEM and tech into general education lessons. This might sound okay on paper, but the reality is that these lessons will be a sheer add-on to the vast curriculum that general ed elementary teachers are already expected to complete. Consolidating STEM and tech instruction within general education will have a negative impact on our children's futures and is a true disservice to them. We live in an increasingly digital and technological world where STEM and tech subjects are becoming more and more important. Schools across the state and nation are ramping up STEM and tech subjects as these lessons provide meaningful learning. Eliminating STEM and tech facilitators at the elementary level seems illogical. These subjects are not just important for future job prospects, but also for critical thinking skills, problem-solving, and creativity. By removing these passionate teachers from the schools, we are depriving our children of a crucial opportunity to develop the specialized skills they need to succeed in the future. Our dedicated STEM and tech facilitators at the elementary level are particularly important because they lay the foundation for future learning. Children's brains are like sponges at this age, and they absorb information at an incredible rate. By exposing them to STEM and tech at an early age, we are setting them up for success and giving them the tools they need to thrive in the future. Furthermore, STEM and tech education is not just about learning specific skills. It's so much more in the classroom, collaboration, innovation, creativity, something that is not taught necessarily in math and English. These skills are transferable to any field and are essential for their success in the future. Removing specialized STEM and tech facilitators from elementary schools sends a message to our children that these subjects are not important, which it actually should be the complete opposite. These are very important subjects. This could have long-term consequences on our children. We must recognize the importance of STEM and tech and invest in our children's future by providing them with the best possible resources and opportunities. These subjects are essential for our children's future success, and it is our duty to ensure that they receive the education they need to thrive in this modern world. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I didn't come here and I didn't write a speech. I-
Could you introduce yourself? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
My name is April Johnson, 2465 Pennington Road in Pennington. I have three children that go to Stony Brook. I have one middle schooler, I have one high schooler, and one graduate from high school. I'm kind of going to go impromptu, okay? Much respect for every single individual here that's on the board, parents and so forth. Thank you so very much. This is a very, very big deal. I've been in this district for almost four years now. And we moved to this district about seven months before the pandemic. And when the pandemic hit, it was very traumatic for everybody. New school, new everything. And then we just didn't go to school no more, and we had our Chromebooks. And the switch of back and forth was not consistent. And what kept my kids wanting to go back to school, because it started out as going to school every other day, and then my child that was in first grade switched teachers in the second half. And what was consistent for him was his sports and STEM. And being a parent of six children, it is very, very important for consistency. And with this upcoming proposed pause, not cut, it shows inconsistency. That's not what children, any child, should come up to. It's inconsistency. STEM is very, very good. Technology is thriving every single year. Next year, we might have an iPhone 20. I don't know, okay? But robotics and everything, STEM and all these programs are actually coming. There's extracurricular activities like through the Y program out here at the Hopewell Y. They have a program that you can pay a little extra and you stay an extra additional hour, you know, after school and do the robotics and do STEM. It works for everybody. And for this, you guys are in such a catch-22 position, I feel for you guys. There has to be some way that we should keep the consistency of keeping the STEM program and the hard-working STEM professionals that show our children how to work and succeed in the world. They have an upcoming senior next year, and he likes STEM, and he likes robots, and he likes all of it. And I want him to throw us for that. So, next year, if it's just cut and dry because it's on a pause, I must tell that it doesn't show consistency.
Thank you.
Reconsider.
Hi, my name is George Schaefer, and I have three kids here in Tolgate. And yeah, basically, I'm here to support the STEM program. I think it's absolutely fantastic. I think it's quite ironic that in this day and age, we are canceling a science program when we're thanking science for getting through all the health and everything else. So, to me, it's, I'm looking at this going $94 million. I know, I understand, it's probably quite a bit to try to figure this out. But my question is very simple. What is the next best option? I'd like to know what else was considered to cut or to change instead of STEM. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, public comment is now closed.
And I think all the parents that came to my small information session, who came here tonight to also share your feedback. And know this, I built, I was one of the ones that helped build this STEM program. And so, one, I think we're confusing and conflating program with putting a pause on the positions. The technology positions are a part of this too, but when we say STEM, it's sort of like STEM is all-encompassing with the facilitators, but STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. So, when we rolled out this program years ago, when it started as a magnet school at Bear Tavern, and it was just a small group of students that we identified, we trained all of our teachers, including the ones at the middle school for those STEM kids that were- rolling up, in STEM and engineering design practices. That is why we have art teachers at the high school that students are being recognized. That's why we have a wellness teacher at Tollgate who's being recognized in the Heckinger Report, who's going to come interview and watch what we're doing in our field day this year. It's because we do STEM everywhere, and it is integrated across content areas, including art. So those trainings have been happening. All of our teachers have been trained on how to use a 3D printer. They all know the engineering design process. And when we decided that it wasn't good enough to just have STEM at Bear Tavern, we needed it for all, it was proposed that we have these STEM facilitators who are initially trained as coaches to support teachers to do the work in their classrooms. Elementary teachers are already responsible for teaching science, math, English, language arts, and to integrate technology in their classroom. We've been one-to-one for years. So we've trained teachers on project design. We have pre-engineering programs throughout the middle school and the high school. None of that's being cut, nor is our robotics. We are just repurposing these positions right now so that we have the support that they need to make sure that they have the fundamentals. Yes, we want our students to be excited about being an engineer. They have to be able to do the math to be an engineer. They have to understand the science to be an environmentalist. They have to be able to read the technical texts that they encounter in all of these subject areas. So, you know, while I understand the reservation here, I also hope that I have a proven track record with you all, that I study things very closely. I've been saying this for a while, that we need the coaches in addition to. And right now, we are just at a critical area right now where I can't let our kids fall any further behind. And while I love our STEM facilitators, and they've done phenomenal work, and they've been recognized heavily, that hasn't been consistent. All of our students are not getting the same experience with STEM because, one, we never designed the positions to do what they've been doing. So I think we need to be, I know that we need to be intentional about it. We need to spell out these positions in a way that all kids are experiencing it, not just the teachers that invite their kids in, not just if you happen to have a certain person versus another person, having consistency. Because I've also heard loud and clear that it is inconsistent between the buildings. So these are, this is just taking a step back, making sure that I'm getting you all the best bang for your buck. And I'm also making sure that kids are able to do what we are supposed to be helping them do, which is learn their math, learn their science, learn how to read critically, learn how to read and decode texts, all of that across content areas. They will not be writing all the curriculum. We have invested in very expensive curriculum. How it's been rolled out has not been consistent. We have been providing teachers lots of training, giving them support in the classroom level. We haven't provided with a K-12 supervisor and no supports underneath. Other districts and neighbors of ours have these supports in place at the coach level. They have multiple layers of supervisors, which I can't justify adding this year. I can't do that. What I can do is make sure that we have people that are working at the classroom level and the technology that's being implemented. These software programs are aligned to content areas. We have language arts content software. We have math software. We have science software. Having those people that are working in those roles be the experts in those platforms that are designed for those curricula, that makes sense, and that's going to be a strong support for them. Is this it? No, we're going to need more layers. I'd love to have it all right now. And understand, there's already flux with our staff, with people resigning, people wanting to move into other positions that are opening up through retirement. Everyone that you think might be in somewhere may not be because there's movement going on. So now, as we're staffing and we're thinking about these moves, thinking about the request for transfers, thinking about who's qualified and who's not, it's time to really think about what can we focus on to fix the issues we have and get the best bang for our buck in a very bad year. So what have we considered? We have cut positions. We've absorbed positions. We consolidated positions. We've done away with software programs. We've done less with more. We've done all of that, and we still need to fix this problem that I just pointed out to you. So I think I touched on everything here. I know that we'll get into it more when we talk about the committee work. But that's why the recommendation, that's why I think that we need to really focus on what we're doing so that the teachers are getting the support that they need in the classroom, and so are our students.
Thank you, Dr. Treese. Okay. Moving on to the remainder of the agenda. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. It's been so long. Yes. Yes, I need a first and a second to adopt the budget.
Motion.
Okay.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Dr. Genovasi?
Yes.
Dr. Liliston? Dr. Lou? Mr. Peters? He's dropped off. Dr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Swicki?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, he can't get it. Okay. All right, we have a majority anyway.
We're good.
All right. Budget passes? I think, I think we... All right. I'll give people a moment to adjust. Okay, we do have a open public comment for, on any item. So the members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. We are asked, you are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open. Okay. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Okay. So we're going to go ahead and move on to, I'm asserting there are no old business items. Okay? Go ahead to the consent agenda items. I need a motion and second. Motion and second to approve the consent or pass the consent agenda items. Okay. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Any questions? Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Consent agenda items are approved. We're going to go ahead and go into all of our committee reports. We'll start with Mr. Swicki.
Okay. Finance and Facilities had a meeting last Monday. All the items were on consent, but I'll just highlight a couple of things. Some of the things we wound up approving were substantial completion of the HVAC work. It's Stony Brook, so it's good to get the vast majority of that done. We had a discussion, one thing we approved was renewal on our food service agreement, and we're heading towards, you know, completion of that overall agreement. So we had, the committee had a discussion about school lunch costs, the cost of meals we have, and, you know, heading towards the next time we go out for food service contract. Let's see. We had a discussion with regard to courtesy busing. That's part of been the overall, it's been part of the overall discussion about the budget. So we started researching that. Got an update on the facilities. One good bit of news is that over at Timberlane last month, we noted that we had a problem with sewer system for one of the bathrooms. The good news is that we got a much more favorable cost for the bid for expediting that work. So that's good news. We also had a discussion led by Anthony Tenzini and Chuck Randy from Integrity Consulting Group. They're the folks who help us with our health insurance. So we had an overview of how we're doing there. So, you know, as sort of an important thing related to the budget, over the past prior years, we've been doing very well with our self-insurance. This year is definitely much more of a challenge. I think the figure we got through February was that we were this year in deficit $900,000. So again, another one of those budget challenges that we've had to face. Because of that, we'll have to adjust our budgeted premium for next year. We've had it stable for a couple of years. One other thing that's a consideration in terms of how our self-insurance costs are working are the fact that our balance of staffing enrolled in our Direct 15 Plan versus the New Jersey Educators Health Plan is changing over time, which we knew it would because of those people hiring and have to go into the educators' plan. That mix is influencing how much we wind up having to expend for the self-insurance. So I think that's the majority of it. We are looking into some mechanisms for potentially finding some savings as far as prescription costs, for example, a proposal was given. So we'll continue to look into those items.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay. Move on to personnel.
Okay. All right. So we met today prior to the board meeting this evening and before the reception for the Governor's Educators Award recipients. On the agenda today, you probably would see a retirement of Greg Harkins, the CSL from Tollgate, who's been with the district since 2011, so a big loss for him, but wish him well on his future endeavors. You will see some long-term substitute appointments with some teachers to cover some teachers that are going to be on leave of absence. There's plenty of adjustments to salaries for staff that's picking up some classes and due to a few leaves. There's the addition of some substitute teachers and some paraprofessionals and staff for the grant-funded programs that usually happen over the summer. Additionally, you'll see some ECA appointments, like coaches at this high school and some lunch duty help at Tollgate. Also included is the approval for the dues for our membership in the CJ Pride group, which we use quite heavily for staffing, finding some quality candidates to, you know, fill some positions here. You will also see that what we discussed today was about the teacher leader positions, like the job descriptions for the literacy teacher leader and the math, science, and technology teacher leader of all the discussions this evening that was also included. We also recognized the Governor's educator and support paraprofessionals for the year. I think that was it. It was a rather quick meeting so that we could get on to the greater part of our time, which was the Governor's educators, our recipients tonight. So that was it.
Thank you, Andrea. Oh, okay. So I need a first and second to approve her items.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Oh. Gotcha.
Yes.
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 Okay. Ed program?
That's also me. We, the ed program, met last week on Wednesday, if I remember correctly. I'm not so sure. And we had a lengthy committee meeting, actually. We had some very good presentations. One was, the first one was from the special ed supervisors, Mr. Needham and Ms. Hoffman. Mrs. Hoffman. And Dr. Hoffman. That's what I thought. That's why I was like, Ms. Hoffman? So, and they pretty much gave us a rundown of the different programs that we already offer, the students that we service, some highlights of some really fantastic things that are happening. And one thing that I took notice of is that what was happening in the, with our little guys, you know, they were doing this yoga program. And she shared lots of pictures with the little guys doing their yoga, and it was absolutely adorable. And I discovered through this presentation that the foundation, the HVEF, they wrote a grant to get, to bring that to them, and it was granted by the HVEF. And they're hoping to expand that and continue it this year. And just a little plug for them is that they do, HVEF is having a fundraiser event coming up in May. May, Friday, May 12th called Boots and Bling. You may or may not have seen it in your email, but strongly encouraged for everyone to go. They do great things for our students and bring to light some really wonderful things that our teachers dream up. And so it would be fantastic if we could, you know, not just us, but the community join in and continue the great things like yoga with preschool. And then we also had another really interesting...
Can I chime in one? That yoga?
Absolutely.
I know in their final session with that instructor, they're actually welcoming in the families for the kids to show their families kind of some of the poses and moves.
Oh, that's great.
Certainly not a, not a session to miss, though.
Oh, that's great. That's really great. I was like, when she showed me the pictures, or she was doing the little slideshow, that sealed the deal for me. Like, it definitely seemed like something that was great. And if we can teach kids, you know, some of those important, you know, mindful things when they're so little, to hopefully carry them through, I think that's fantastic. So I was really excited about that. So, and then, so the other presentation that we also had was this restorative justice practices program that it looks like the county detective Marlin Webb was the one who presented it to us. We've worked with him before. And they're trying to start this new program and partner with some schools so that we could not just, we don't want to punish our students when they do something, or whether inappropriate or insensitive, but that we can provide them with some restorative justice instead. So we're looking forward to making that partnership. We also reviewed some field trips and some PD, and we talked about a math workshop course that we would like to bring to Timberlane. I think that's it for the meeting. A life skills course. I do remember that. You're right. Yes, we did. We did talk about that. You're exactly right. I didn't write that down in my notes. I was so excited about the yoga that I didn't get that far. But you're right, life skills. We wish all of our students could take that, our kids, not just our students. So it was a good meeting, but it was a lengthy one, one longer than we usually have, but it was good discussion.
You have the new course that you...
The math workshop course. And then the life skills course.
We need to approve.
Yes.
So are you... Great. So to adopt the new courses, we need a first and second? Roll call?
Yes.
Yep. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to community relations.
Yes. So most of my community relations was talked about earlier, so I'm going to just briefly say it again. But we talked about the superintendent chats, one on May 18th around mental health and school safety that you heard in Dr. Treese's update, also the one on June 7th around drug awareness and safety. We also talked about the upcoming mid-June Express, where we're going to talk about some of our green activity... of our green activities, the guest club that was mentioned by our student representative, and the trip to DC around climate change and mental health, talking about other Green Week activities, and then celebrating our seniors. And then... Oh, I'm sorry. I was like reading my notes and didn't know what it was. Just so people know, we actually just finished up our Green Week, which ran from April 15th through the 22nd, so highlighting some of those activities. And that was pretty much our meeting for community relations. And then our social and emotional learning, I'm going to hand over to Dr. Trese because I missed that meeting because I needed some social and emotional support.
That's okay, we got you. So we reviewed the May 3 wellness activities that are going to be happening in PD, and I shared that schedule. I'm sorry, I didn't answer that question when the, the community member asked about the TMS survey. Timberlane is going to be using, doing, the DEI committee is leading a session at Timberlane around racial and bias comments, because they've had a lot of them, as we've seen in our HIBs. And so the committee of teachers is actually leading that PD, and it's around how do we work with this with our kids. And I think that they have, actually have activities that they're going to turnkey with them that they'll do then with the students on social, like specifically around their use of social media. And I see one of our wellness, digital wellness committee people out there and how, you know, we can, we can start working on this problem. The elementary schools will be focusing on Character Strong, and they'll, they'll be working through workshops that the teachers will offer and the members of the SEL committee. And on the secondary level at the high school, they're going to be doing a presentation on teacher hacks for AI and Chat GPT. It is here. We know it's here. So how do we embrace it? And because the kids are going to be using it, adults are using it. So, you know, figuring out how we can embrace it and make it a part of our classroom, but also be aware that, you know, kids are going to cheat. So we need to be aware of that as well. So that's what that professional development is going to be. So we talked about that as well and shared that and how that links to the social emotional work that we're doing. E-learning days, May 25th is a social emotional learning day. I shared the learning activities. Parents will receive an email from me. These are the things that your kids can work on in grain vans, and then you can do that, and the kids will, could discuss the activities that they did when they return. We're also going to be offering a digital wellness challenge where one of those days we're going to be inviting parents and their children to stay off of the social media naughty sites, like, they're not necessarily naughty, but naughtyness happens, like TikTok and Facebook, and just kind of power down for the day and just see what it's like to not be on your technology, and you actually have to look at somebody and talk to them for the day. We're going to ask them to track their, their feelings before, on a regular day when they're using their, their social media, and then the day without, and see if they can compare. Anyone who wants to share that with the committee, we're going to be looking for selecting some randomly selected ambassadors of those people that want to share those experiences. What was it like powering down? And what lessons would I like to bring back to the committee for future PD and for future offerings for our community? So that's what we talked about. Oh, and then we also talked about the restorative justice program that Detective Webb and the prosecutor's office is offering. I just wanted to clarify that this is restorative circles around racial bias or racial incidents or crimes that happened in the district that we select that are, that we think rise to the level that we want them to come in and run this circle. They're going to train our students, our middle school and high school team, a team of students, and a teacher in each building. And then when we identify this is a case we want to run through a restorative circle, we just had a couple recently this year that probably could have qualified. They'll work with us in an educational way. And then if the same student is a perpetrator, again, it's something that rises to that level, they, they will be working with them through education through the, through the department and a station house adjustment and all of that. Know that we, the prosecutor's office and our local police departments know of every biased incident and crime, possible crime we have. We have to report it anyway. So instead of it becoming a station house adjustment right away, this is a nice interim step where the kids can work through how do they fix it? And our, and our student body has a way in on that. So that's what that program is that, that is offering to us for free. And then Phil's Beans was here today. We just kind of talked about that that was starting today at Phil's Drills, and he's been working, he started at Stony Brook today, and he's going to be going through all of our elementary schools, doing movement wellness and some mindfulness. He's also a nurtured heart-trained person, so he's been working with our kids in some, some fun games. So that was it. That's what we talked about.
So since you brought up the subject of this survey that was given to the kids, was that, did, did the board ever get to discuss the survey, at least in the committee, or?
This, and again, I'm going to ask you to, I'm going to have to get back to you on this, but I believe this was just like a survey that a teacher gave to say, how would you like to be addressed? Are you a member of the LGBT community? What can we do to make you feel comfortable?
This was a teacher?
This was like one small, like a small survey that was given. One, the principle of knowledge that it should have been, even if it's just a small classroom, how do, how can we, you know, or a small group of students, it should have been communicated to the parents beforehand. Ms. Jean Freddie reached out to the parents and acknowledged that. And it wasn't like, what's your sexuality? It's more like, well, how can we make you feel comfortable? What can you identify with?
Right. And all I wanted to, and I'm glad to hear that Ms. Jean Freddie addressed it right. I just feel like these kinds of things, especially on subjects that are controversial in the current environment, should be something that there should be some kind of a review on before.
Agreed. And that was important. But again, it wasn't, it was like, but still, even that, we, it should have been, those things were acknowledged and they understand. Awesome.
Moving on to policy.
Can I have a motion to move the items up for first reading, please? Great. Okay. So what we have this week is, or this month, is first the HVRSD org chart, and then we have policy and regulation, 5200 on attendance. And when we had our meeting about a week and a half ago, we had a very long, lengthy, enjoyable, and lively conversation about attendance. One might say, oh, attendance, you're either there or you're not. Well, you look at the fact that we've got an 18-page regulation on attendance, and that tells you how complicated the subject is. And I just want to thank Dr. Trese, Ms. Riley, and Ms. Jean Freddie, because they brought both their perspectives as educators, administrators, and as parents to the discussion. And I think based upon that, we made a lot of good, we, we got a lot of good feedback. You'll note in what was provided to the board, we started with the state changes. There's a lot of things that are optional. The stuff that became optional, we made a lot of changes to. So I'll just highlight some key things that are changing in this regulation. There's a clarification on attendance for home instruction. It's actually more complicated than you think. What's required to actually get credit for a full day? You know, it's half-day attendance, but it makes a difference whether you're a first grader or a kindergartner, even though both go full days. Clarification of state excused absences, there's been a lot of changes there. One change we made was, previously it was, it stated college visits. We thought it important to make it clear that career exploration for our career-focused students should be an option for them to explore as well. calculation of the absenteeism rate, that's actually been something of a challenge for us. So we got some really good feedback from the principals on that. And then a whole discussion about what constitutes an excused absence. So we put in a clarification to make it clear that mental health is important as well as physical health and making that an obvious case for allowing an excused absence. Put in some specific items for parental and physician notification, just to make that clear and promote some consistency. Preparation of assignments of students going to be missing an extended period of time, putting some, something more concrete into the policy, into the regulation to, to again, drive consistency. And just some changes to the truancy procedures based upon the feedback from our administrators. So first reading, obviously we'll have time for, you know, other feedback, but the policy committee is recommending this be approved for first reading.
All those in favor? Oh, sorry. You were looking down.
So I actually read this policy because... So, so, yeah. I have a question, and it's, it's the parental excuse letter. It's, it's actually not a question. It's a suggestion for clarification. When I first read the statement, I read it as it's up to four days with an excuse letter, and then if you're absent five days, then you get a doctor's note, which is reasonable. In fact, it's, you're probably less than four days as a, as a, as a single jurist period. Then I reread it, and I said, I don't know. What that actually says is you get four days a year as a parent where it's just your letter. So we should clarify that, that it's, that it's, because it's not... Yeah, I had to read it twice and go, wait a minute, yes, that's, yes. Four days total per year, right? It should be somewhere per year, so I was going to make that. Yes. No, 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 it's, it's literally where it says. Yeah, you get four notes that you send in for an excuse absence per year. Fifth one is null, so if your child is, at some point, you need to start going to the doctor, which is probably not a better idea if your child is ill that much. Yeah, so that was my question. And then the other one I actually had is I noticed that family illness or death is not checked as an excused absence, and family death, if there's a death in the family, I would imagine we may want to make that an excused absence. And it's just, so this is all, they're both in the same section, B dot two, dot B, and I'm just looking at my screen.
Yeah, I'm seeing it now. It's not specifically checked. And, and I think my recollection of the discussion is that based upon some prior experiences having a, we had people with multiple burial parents, multiple deceased relatives, so, so there were some challenges there. So I think the point was that just because something is checked doesn't mean that the administrators don't have the discretion to permit it, but we, you know, we had to be a little bit clearer there just because of some of the views. So again, very good feedback. I think we'll... Yep.
I have... So question on some supporting mental well-being. It's, it's pretty vague in here, and unlike, you know, when you've got strep throat, you know, a child can be seeing a counselor on a regular basis, still have mental health challenges, but you're not going to go see that doctor every time your child is absent. So where in this policy are we supporting parents with those types of absences that can be very unannounced, very frequent?
Yeah, I know.
Oh, they would, if we have excuse, five or four, IEP, IEP.
Yeah.
So which policy would that, so what I'm saying is...
I think you're trying to help parents clarify.
Yeah, I'd like to see it in a policy or tell, like, if not in this policy, it should be, we should note it. It should be noted in the policy? So at, so speaking as a parent right now, I had no idea that that was actually a thing.
It's being added. It's being, it's, it's not, it's being...
No, 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 no. That if your child has an IEP and has significant absences, it doesn't follow our absentee policy. No, 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 I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying nowhere in this policy, as a parent reading this policy, does it tell me that that is okay. Do you understand what you're saying? So even if you have an IEP, oh, well, I don't know. You know what I'm saying? Like, it should be clear. Yeah.
Can do that.
But we can say that. We have to be very careful, though, about giving too much space for people's own interpretation of, oh, my child can, because this policy is designed to stop truancy.
Yes.
Right? And you don't want to say one day, oh, my child was having mental health problems, no documentation of it, no evidence of it. So, you know, when we have, in addition to all these things where it refers to these codes and things, it's sending letters when you miss four days, having a meeting. We have to have protocols around how to do some sort of intervention. And by the time you get to like eight, nine absences that are unexcused, you have a plan, and then we're working with the student. And that doesn't mean they're necessarily coming to school, you know, as much as we would like.
But there's something there.
So I think the bottom line is, is just looking for more clarity in the, in that particular area.
Exactly. It's just vague when we start to mention mental health in here.
Yeah.
So one last comment as a parent who guilty of some things and, but also had to deal with not understanding what the policy is till I've gone ahead and read it. Once we adopt this policy, it might be a good idea to have a little summary, right? Like a, like a quick guide to attendance with a disclaimer that says, hey, we're not covering all the details, you can go and look there, but for example, the fact that we're going to have mental days and we're essentially treating them like sick days. The fact that if you want, if you as a parent want your, your child, you know, your child has a cold and they're out today, that phone call is not enough. You'd have to send in a written note once the child comes back to school that says this.
It is, but before this policy, parents could never just write a note without a doctor's note being excused.
Yes.
It was always unexcused. And that's a change.
Right. And, and, and I, and I welcome that change because if you have a cold and your child needs to be out for one day today, just getting to a doctor's, you don't get that appointment when it was. So, right, but kind of making sure that people are aware of this, because this is the one thing that, usually I can count on my kids to tell me what the rules are, and they usually write, this is the one thing that they're consistently wrong about.
Go figure.
In both, well, but not always to their, you would think that they're always, right? But it's not. They're, they are... but it's not, they're, they are clearly not aware of this, and the parents are not aware of the fine details, and we're gonna be introducing some things in here that are gonna be important for people.
Fair enough. And then also, oftentimes kids are afraid to, I don't wanna, I don't want to, I'll get in trouble if X, Y, Z, so, yeah, to your point.
Yes, or, there's, there's kids who don't wanna go to school, there's kids that you have to insist on, you're running a fever, nobody wants to see you in school, and no, you're not gonna lose credit, right?
Exactly.
And I'll be honest, I had to deal with the other.
Right.
No, same thing, like, I think the, the magic percentile is 10%. Once we get to a 10% absence number, things become much more difficult, so, yeah, so. Okay, so, okay, so, so, wait, did we ever do a-
No, we did not.
Okay, yeah, okay, we did the motion.
So, then, we're voting on, it's okay to go to second reading?
First reading.
First reading. Those on, all in favor of first reading?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining or opposed? Okay, so moved.
Okay, all right.
So approved.
I know, we've managed to drive the whole audience away.
They're like-
Yeah, can, can I have a motion to move the items up for second reading, please?
Motion.
Okay, this is quick, we've got policy 5415.5, title one, policy 2700, services to non-public school students, policy and regulation 9270, homeschooling and equivalent education outside the schools, we discussed these last month, no changes since that time, we're recommending a motion to approve.
Requesting motion? No, no, I was, I was helping everyone else.
We're ready, yeah. Boys, roll call vote, please, Bob. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I think we're calendars.
Okay, calendars, so Bob, you want, do you wanna?
Everybody's like, ready to race to the end.
Second. So Bob, do you want a meeting? Do you not want a meeting? That's fine, yeah.
Afternoon or-
Don't we have a-
Or do we have?
Okay, okay. Okay, we should be fine, for me, too.
We'll do it, we'll do it quickly.
Finance and facilities, 5:00 PM on the 15th.
Who wants to go next?
It, yeah, so, whatever works for the rest of you.
And you said the 10th worked best for you, Lydia?
It looks like SEL was already set for the 11th at 10:00 AM.
What's for me? What day was that, I'm sorry, Bob.
Would we like to follow it to EdCom?
So, we have two voters. And how we just, when you're here, the sonic boom going down the turnpike, we'll know what it is.
For another day?
Are you actually?
For Mark.
Community relations.
We're trying to help.
But, I think there's no good to be this time, because I think, right, my son's busy. No, no, I'm good. No, no, I don't, I have that sustainability thing, yeah, this whole day. So can we do the policy meeting on another day besides this?
Of course.
Does it start at eight, again, are we willing, possible to do nine?
I can do nine, I have a question.
On which day?
On the fourth.
On the fourth?
Oh, sorry, fourth, I cannot do nine, but like, May 1st, 2nd, 3rd.
I can do it 2nd or 3rd.
I can do the 3rd.
2nd or 3rd at what time?
Nine.
Yeah.
I can do nine on the-
Dr. Wilson's executive meeting?
Yeah, May 3rd on 29th.
Awesome. Sweet, read it everybody? Awesome, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, um, public comment, closed.
See, no public?
Seeing no public, yeah. All right, so, need a first and second, right, to move into executive session?
Second.
Okay, so, we, where's the little thing I read? Oh, so it's the, the board, it will enter it into executive session to discuss the following HIB, and no potential litigation, no action will be taken.